Like to call our regular meeting to order at 7:07 and if we could stand to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Um, our next point is approval of the agenda. We would like to add an H three for the superintendent's evaluation. So I would like to entertain a motion for that if anybody would be willing.
Madu and Neutentalison moot.
Jacob Mars second.
Go ahead, Jacob.
Jacob Mars second.
Okay, and now my let's go, but if there's any further discussion, if not, we will do a roll call vote of adding that to H three. Uh, Jacob.
I.
Madu?
I.
Lord?
I.
Sophia?
I.
Rini?
I.
Griffin?
I.
Dana?
Hi.
I'm I as well, therefore we will add H three, the superintendent's evaluation to here. Okay, next will be entertain a motion for the approval of minutes of the April fourteenth, twenty twenty one.
Christina Ploard, I'd like to make a motion to approve the April fourteenth minutes, twenty twenty one.
Jacob Mars second.
Okay, any discussion or changes? If not, we will do the roll call vote. Jacob?
I.
Madu?
I.
Lord?
I.
Sophia?
I.
Rini?
I.
Griffin?
I.
Dana?
I.
I as well, therefore motion passes as is with no changes. Um, at this point, let's go to public participation. Um, we don't have Jacob, it'll be a two minute time limit. He will give you a visual and vocally let you know when you have thirty seconds left. If you could, please state your name and your address for Lisa, so we can write that down. Um, at this point, you can raise your hand or star nine. Going once, going twice. Okay, we will roll into correspondence.
You bring the report up. All right, correspondence today is going to be pretty brief. We had two emails. We had an email asking if a new permanent board secretary will be appointed. And we also received an email asking that the students return to full day in-person learning five days a week. The author also asked for a remote learning team to be put in place for students who stay remote. And that's it, and I'll get that report to Lisa after the meeting.
Thank you, Jacob. Okay, points of information, I like to open this up to any board member. If you have anything that you would like to say, please raise your hand, and if not, we will jump right into, oh, Jacob.
Yeah, I'll just comment quickly up on that last email. Um, I understand that author's lack of concern. But I did want to emphasize that I think that the district has made a lot of good strides in that direction, and um, I think I will, well, I'll definitely continue to advocate for more in-person learning. I think we'll be able to make more progress as vaccine rollout continues and we move towards a fall, so.
Yeah, of course.
I also got an email, it wasn't to the whole board, just asking about masks and outdoor use, so maybe Dr. Willett could talk about that during the COVID update and if there's any strategies on uh, you know, masks in the outdoor spaces in the school. That was all, that was all I got.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, let's go to the student representatives' report, so Alexandra Costa in summer group.
Hi, everyone. So this Tuesday, ninth graders, tenth graders, and eleventh graders did NGSS testing, which is basically a standardized science test. And also, I just wanted to let everyone know that there will be no finals this semester, except for if you're taking AP class or a UConn class.
Um, and then based on what Summer said, it was actually just eleventh graders that took NGSS testing. The other three got to go home early. Um, we had a half day on Tuesday, and then Thursday and Friday, eighth graders have their step up day. So the THS peer mentors will greet the eighth grade students and guide them on tours through the building, which is very exciting, especially for the eighth graders, and then the THS NHS sponsored blood drive is this Saturday, May first, from nine AM to one PM. So if you would like to register to donate blood, I believe there was a link posted on Open Discussion earlier this week, which I think would probably be the most, the easiest way to get to that. But otherwise, I think that's it.
What about the Battle of Broadway?
Oh, yeah, that is also coming out. I don't remember the exact date of that, but I can find that out. I think those, I feel like a link might have been posted on Open Discussion for those too, but otherwise they're definitely accessible, but I will figure out where those are.
Perfect. Uh, thank you, ladies. Um, any decisions yet for colleges?
I'm going to UConn.
Oh, well, that's perfect. Hey.
Love it. Congratulations.
I'm going to Northeast. I'm going to Northeastern.
Awesome, Northeastern. That's fantastic, ladies. I just figured, I'm like, you guys gotta be making decisions at some time.
Yeah, this isn't days like officially this Saturdays, but I think most of the kids in our grade have pretty much decided by now.
Yeah, it's coming down, you're winding down here, senior activity time. That's great, guys. Thank you so much for everything. Keep me posted if there's any, you know, we find out what dates, I just don't know off the top of my head, I have written down too, but
Okay.
I moved all my paperwork. So thank you, guys. Uh, let's go to the superintendent's report for the, let's do H one, the budget.
Sure, so uh, tonight, you know, just giving a basic overview of some information. The end of year document that I call the phase documents, typically we have one in April, one in May, and the final one in June. So there, we're taking a little break from that as we gather more information, but um, coming back into May, you know, the next iteration will come. So tonight I just gathered some information as we head towards referendum, just to give everybody sort of a refresher of where we're at. I also, you know, we also do publish the town's uh, referendum info in our newsletter, so just to remind everybody as a, you know, friendly reminder that um, you know, that referendum is coming up on May fourth in the gym at the Talon Recreation Center from six A, you know, six AM to eight, and uh, there's information both in our newsletter and in the town's blasts uh, on, on the referendum for anyone who needs any absentee ballots or applications, there's Dropbox locations as well as the pandemic has allowed. So there's parking lot A near Human Services parking lot C near the library entrance and so on. So this is just reflecting the information the town has asked and has put out in various ways. And just giving everybody a reminder that we are literally one week away, less than one week away from, from the referendum. So we should know in about a week what our status is currently. You know, and I'll go over that a little bit here as well, just as an update. Just to reiterate some of the financial fiscal year twenty one and twenty two considerations. Fiscal year twenty one, the remaining balance as of April twenty eighth, which is today, although there's a number of things in the system because we've had some people out and we had April, um, you know, obviously, yeah, last week there was not a lot of people available. So there are some things that are yet to be incurred there, but um, the remaining balance as of today, you know, taking into consideration those factors that they are potentially going to take that down a bit, but currently it's seven ninety one, nine eighty. You may recall from the phase document, April's version, that the target that we thought we may end at is something like three fifteen. So we're tracking towards that, and so that, that's looking fairly accurate at this moment. Like I said, it's, it's difficult to project with absolute certainty. But um, you know, but it does look like, given we're about eight hundred now, that's about where we thought we would be. And in the next few weeks, um, obviously excess cost comes in and plays a factor. So we're tra- we're tracking the way we thought we would probably be tracking, and uh, we're, we're close to what that EOI Phase One doc is looking like. So the May document will have even more, um, you know, more, more of an updated version of, of last month's numbers, and we're getting, as we did last year, closer and closer to having, um, you know, very, very solid numbers on what the end of the year looks like. And as you recall, last year, we did make some decisions as we were going into the end of the year. Some things that the, the board was comfortable committing to or, or supporting. So that'll be the same thing that we will need to be doing this year, uh, because some things just need resolution as we go towards the end. And the process of the end of year document, um, the phase documents, is really uh, transparency to throw the things out there that the district is considering working with, you know, working with, has to consider at this moment in time and so on. So that's coming in the next iteration in May. But currently, right now, remaining balance is seven ninety one, COVID fund impacts about one sixty eight. Those fluctuate up and down based on, you know, what we can, you know, get from uh, the, you know, the government grants and other things that come in. So we're at one seventy about there. Anticipated excess costs has not yet been received, and that happens in May. End of year considerations, we are going to need to expend seventy five for food service salaries in the short term. We talked a little bit about that last time. We got to start putting that in. That was going to come out of our salary line for the food service salaries, so they can help balance out, um, you know, where they, where they've been in uh, short due to the pandemic. We need to expend fifteen thousand roughly for graduation. There is some money in there, but as you know, we are doing Yard Goat Stadium outside so that we can have as many seats, um, as many, uh, five, basically, I believe is the minimum, the one that, that we were guaranteed per, per family. So um, in order to have that in an outdoor venue, which is still what the DECD sector rules say, you know, we need to, to do that, so that's something we're going to have to expend. And um, we have had a request for those portables, and the State Department needs those portables, so that's a even more important reason why we've got to, we've got to move up that throttle on getting things out of the portables and, and staged in the new building or in the truck that we're pulling in. So we do need to move forward, you know, on the truck and the moving labor and things like that. Those college students are coming back, we need to use them. It's something that is even more important now because of the, the timeline. And those portables are going to need to be pulled sooner than originally thought. So that's, that's something that we are contending with. So these four items are, are really items that we need to, to start to expand. And I just wanted to share that that's, that's kind of where we're at. We had some items like that last year. But these, these are the ones this year we've got to kind of take care of. So you'll see these probably, um, you know, coming off of or, or being factored into that uh, next phase document as, as they start to, to get pushed out or expended. So I put them out here just so you can look at them and, and, you know, discuss them as a board, but we are, we do really need them to move forward on that. So um, and like I said, last year, we did similar thing. Uh, some of the items, you, you kind of said, at least in, you know, a cursory way, yeah, we're, we're good with, with doing that. Fiscal year twenty two, just as a reminder, the town council allocated for the Board of Ed two percent budget, that's a roughly uh, two point zero zero four one three, and it's extended form confirmed by Lisa. Reduction is about four seventy four. We have acquired, you know, we've gotten to about four hundred and five of reductions, which was in the EOI Phase One document. The May version will have the, the rest of that shored up, and I'm working on that right now. So you'll see in the, the next version of that end of year phase doc that we get to the amount four seventy four, but part of me waiting on that is the May four, you know, May four referendum. We got to see what comes out of the May four referendum, so I have a, a better idea of what needs to be in that next May, you know, Phase Two version. Of course, I, we all hope it passes, but um, something else happens, I need to, I need to be able to adjust the figures in that document accordingly. So um, so I haven't put a, I have not decided on the rest of that, uh, the difference between the four oh five to the four seventy four, because we just need to see what happens in, in six days. So that's roughly where we are with uh, with the town council move forward. Essentially, the board action desired in this case is really simply just review and, and knowing where we're at. So that's essentially where we're at. Um, see, hash, pretty short, right? Are you excited? All right, so there we go. So that, that's essentially it. I would say probably the most important things right now are just realizing that, you know, we're going to need to take action and move forward on these. I don't, you don't have to necessarily vote because end of year expenses are all within the purview of, you know, what we would spend as a district, but you know, just letting you know, these things, we do need to move on those. Because of their nature.
Okay, um, let's go to the board members here and we'll go through the questions and just see what's happening. So Jacob?
Okay, I got two questions. Thank you, Dr. Will, for the update. One was, um, and I want, by worrying, to be careful here because I think it could be taken out of context, but I'm just wondering, has the, your adminis- um, your office considered, you know, a possible list of reductions in case we can't invest in everything for the end of year? I'm not suggesting that that's um, something that is likely to happen or something that I want to happen, but because I don't want to end up in a situation where we're facing a massive increase a couple of years down the road because we made some imprudent decisions. I was just curious if that has been under consideration at all.
Yes, um, and I'm trying to look up the composition of it. We, you know, the um, pull this up just so I can refer to it, but yes, we have, we've, in, in the phase document that was there, there were some reductions outright. And there will, there will be more, that fifty will have to be achieved that way. And, and if needed, then I obviously would have to go back to that drawing board with the admin and uh, and curriculum leaders and decide, you know, liaisons, leaders, team leaders, and grade leaders, and decide what happens next. But yeah, I, you know, yes.
Okay, and my second point was about the action and consent sought items, those four items. I was just going to make a suggestion that we move that to action, but um, I don't know if we really need to. In any, in any case, I'm okay with those four things personally. I think we've talked about them a lot.
Okay, uh, let's go to Madu.
Thank you. Um, I had two questions. Um, at the budget week, or at the budget uh, presentation last week, part of the reason given for the decrease from our recommended three point one nine percent increase to the two percent increase was because, you know, we should, we already have money, so we should use it to pre-invest. Can you explain? I guess, why pre, pre-investments for the ensuing year instead of long-term planning is bad for the, bad for our school system or, you know, detrimental to our school system? I mean, obviously, we have no choice but to do it this year, but.
Yeah, we are um, we are essentially, uh, you know, in a situation where we, if we didn't do the pre-investments, the, the risk we take on it is that I cannot reach the number without impacting staff potentially. You know, and, and that's generally the, the, the nuclear option, you know, no one wants to hit, you know, hit the staff level, so if we can avoid that. And we're not in a position, as I said, you know, the enrollment is balancing out. Talon has reached its threshold at this point. We need to maintain services, not, not, not go backwards in them because we are now leveling out. That enrollment is not going to go down that much at this point. It's going to level out, and that's kind of what the projections have been showing. So the, the desire here is to avoid doing uh, damage staff-wise, because that is the, that's the, if that happens, it creates bumping and it creates all kinds of movement. And it has an extremely negative effect. We lose well-trained people that we've, you know, spent time, putting time and energy into that human capital investment. So it's not a great thing to have to do the, you know, to do, but if you do a pre-investment on some of these, these items, right now, it constitutes, you know, about, um,
Sure, it'd also make it harder to recruit new, new staff as well.
Yeah, it would. So the, the pre-investments are about four hundred thousand right now, four hundred and six thousand of. And that's why we just have to, right, so I guess.
A lot of staff. I guess the question is, you know, what would we normally do with excess funds at the end of the year? Like, let's say we didn't have to pre-invest. You know, what, what would we normally do with excess funds at the end of the year? Well, I don't know the answer to this question just because I'm new, you know.
Yeah, you know, what I would say is that, you know, in the years that I've been here, what I've seen in the, in the phase documents or something that I, and, you know, wanted to introduce to give everybody a sense of exactly how we got from point A to point B at the end of the year. So that's, those are new within this last two years, but um, going back, essentially, you know, there are sometimes, as you know, some things that may work out very favorably for the district, and then there may be some things that do not. And when there are, so maybe, uh, you know, we didn't have to spend as much on transportation or, or fuel or something. When those funds have been available, there are always surrogate things that are needed by the district, but just were not either immediately known eighteen months ago at the beginning of the budget cycle, or they became needed somewhere during, in the duration of uh, that year or six or three months leading up. And oftentimes, those are facilities items. They may not be two hundred thousand dollar facilities items, but there may be many twenty thousand dollar ones or thirty thousand dollar ones. And that's a regular thing. Uh, Peter Staub, the facilities director, has done an amazing job of putting us on, you know, the right kind of plan so that we you know, we're not watching things fall apart and having to bail things out by the hundreds of thousands. But um, but he also does rely on, at the end of the year, there are some things that come up that need to be done, and funds like this, like we are using, um, that was in that end of year document, there are some things that popped up that we can address now or they can get worse, you know, and then if we address them now, we do not have to increase the town's capital you know, capital requests and things like that, or increase their bonding, um, because we're able to, to take action on it. Um, and so some of the things are in there from the past. There's a shed, there's a, uh, you know, there's um, that concrete work, there is that. You know, there is the, uh, I'm trying to look back this, the scoreboard, you know, that is starting to fail and fizzle out. All of those things would end up being more and more that the town would have to bond, but instead can be taken out you know, of, of future needs because we could address them with, with something that turned out favorable.
So, so by, by pre-investing now, it, it eliminates, in, in pre-investing in fiscal year twenty two, it eliminates our ability to do things like this, correct?
Well, it will, yeah, that, yes, because you're going to go down by the things you need to re-acquire, so
Right.
you will need to make up the, you know, some of those items or a number of those items in that budget for fiscal year twenty three. So yeah, I would eat into.
And I was just going to say theoretically, it could come to a head fiscal year twenty three, correct?
It could, yeah. I, I think also, um, one of the reasons, you know, there's been some weird, weird fluctuations in the last few years and um, and COVID, for instance, the COVID pandemic, when we were coming off the state budget crisis, I thought it could never be wackier than that. We, we'll never have a situation as strange as the state budget crisis, at least not for a while, and then the pandemic came. And I, I, we, we had this weird situation where if someone had asked me a year before the pandemic, do you think you're going to have trouble keeping your staff in, you know, at a certain level? I would think, no, I mean, you know, educators want to be in education. You know, people want to work in it, then the pandemic comes and we're struggling to make, maintain staff levels. I, you know, the downside is that was extremely stressful for everybody, the students, the staff, the parents, everybody. But on the upside, well, there's some money here at the end. So taking the funds that we have at the end and being able to use it to offset COVID impacts, to use it to avoid, you know, capital expenses in the future and take that number down and the bond number down for the town, use it for things, that's, that's an opportunity for us to do that. But as you said, we do have to be careful that we don't do too much of pre-investing of things that you'll need in fiscal year twenty three, because we may not have that kind of year in a more typical year. And we have had, we have gone through a few years of both typical and highly atypical years in the last five or six years. It's been interesting how some have been very typical years and others have been the mo- you know, more, more different than I think most people have seen in, in, in decades.
Gotcha. I, that was it for me. Thank you. I appreciate the answers.
Sure. Thank you, Madu. Uh, let's go to Griffin.
Thank you, Ashley. Um, Dr. Will, I was just curious, um, the seventy five thousand for the food services. Has that number gotten better than what we originally anticipated, or this is just a piece of, I believe it was one twenty seven roughly?
Yeah, it was the, the total number is one eighty seven minus the sixty one. I'm trying to get out of, you know, a different source of funding, so one twenty six, something, right? This is the immediate seventy five we need now.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? And I'm, I'm only taking it in the, in the chunk we need like right now. And then I'll update that, that it still remains as a total chunk of about one eighty seven. But this, we would, I don't, I, we're going to need to spend, so I just didn't, I want everybody to know what's happening, you know.
Okay, that's fine. I just, you know, for a second, I got a little excited that maybe that ended better.
That would be great, wouldn't it? Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. I mean, to, to there, maybe there will be something silver lining a month or two out, you know, as certain things happen in our cafeterias, but I, but probably not to that extent.
I think you could do like a full-fledged like cookie-to-go drive, because those kids miss those cookies at the high school.
No, I think we're working on it. Definitely working on it.
Wipe their fingers and pay as they leave the school for some cookies. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, looks like all the board members have asked their questions, Dr. Will. Um, like you said, I don't believe that we need to have a vote for that. It sounds like you pretty much are where you're, where you need to be. Is that kind of my understanding?
Yeah, yeah, we are, we're fine, and it's within the realm of authority to do that. So unless there's any major objections, now would be the time to talk about major objections to it, but otherwise I'll take that as, you know, we're able to move forward, and I would normally be doing that anyway, you know, if I wasn't putting it in phase documents, we would need to make some of these expenditures to keep everything where they need to be.
We got Rini over here.
Um, yeah, just a question around that. So to the degree that, you know, policy thirty ten like that, seventy five thousand dollars, if you're taking that from another line item, don't you have to have a board approval to do that?
Well, we're, we're actually just expending it out of salaries. So we're not, we're.
But this wasn't in salaries before, right? Because.
Well, it's not, it wasn't, it, it is in salaries. It's part of what we have left at the end, you know, we're going to have more in salaries this year. So we're going to be paying food service people out of salaries, and that was part of what we were kind of talking about there. So we don't, it's not a transfer. It's, it's just paying them out of salaries.
But right, but the food services is self-supporting in the typical year, so it wouldn't be part of a budgeted salary line, or is it like, are you saying then it's an offset? I, like, I'm not clear.
Yeah, I'm saying it's an offset, so they're not going to need to expend it because we're expending it out of salary. So then they will be able to recover some funds because they're not, they are not expending it out of their salary line. It's expended out of the, the salary line we use for staff in the district. So we have funds there because of our situation, and they are just going to benefit from not having to pay out those. Therefore, it will help dig them a bit out of the hole because the revenue they're taking in will not be diminished by what they had to pay out. So it's a way of balancing them out without, you don't have to make a transfer. They're already district staff. It's just coming out of another salary line. That's all.
Um, Dana?
Thank you, Ashley. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Um, thank you, Dr. Will. Um, question, kind of to talk, go back to, circle back to Madu's original question and to get a little bit more clarity. Um, and yes, obviously, I know that any further reductions beyond if it, again, I guess this kind of goes to Jacob's original question is, they're preparing for the referendum, whichever way it goes, I guess. Obviously, we don't want to have any losses in the faculty or staff area. And I get that we were pre-investing and putting money in, um, because this isn't in a typical year. However, monetarily, I mean, you explained about enrollment leveling out and ensuring that we have staff going forward, but monetarily in a twenty twenty three budget. And I don't know if this is what you were asking, Madu. I think this is kind of where, where you might have been going with it, or, or at least it teed off teed it off for me to, to ask the question is, I feel like, you know, so we're here, right? We're pre-investing here, the pendulum swings, so then we think that we spent here. And then in twenty twenty three, we have to double up. So monetarily, let's say, we would have something in for round numbers. We have something at a hundred dollars for our budget that we would have normally had in twenty one, twenty two. We took that out because we pre-invested it. So now it's at zero, right? So now. So now, when we catch up, or it's at negative 100. So then when we catch up next year, we'll really, really need that 100. It's really looking like we're asking for 200, which inflates our numbers and our ask as a Board of Ed. Am I understanding that correctly? Monetarily, I'm, I'm speaking on a line item.
We would be replacing those, it would be starting from a lower budget position. So, you know, a $10 addition to something that was a pre-investment would be $10 more. And, you know, that would make the budget higher by $10 and thus increase it by that percentage. So yes, whatever you do, you know, invest in that you are replacing in the fiscal year 23 will push that, will push the budget number up, yes.
So I guess that's, that's my, that's a big question. I think that, you know, that it's important for us as a board to know, but because when we go for our ask, and for those of us who, who are on the board in 2023, or for our future board members in 2023, they're going to need to be know, because now it almost looks like your Board of Ed is asking for this egregious ask, which is this huge ask, when in fact, it's just sustaining and maintaining the services that we had. I guess that's where I get concerned about pre-investments or pre, pre-purchasing or pre, however we want to put it. And I, and I get, you know, putting it in capital and those kind of things are one-time purchase, like the square mark offer, that kind of thing. Just when it comes to recurring costs, you know, it's, it's, it's concerning, because especially when we have a largely resident tax base, it impacts our residents as a whole. And if we continue to put ourselves in a pre-purchase, 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 pre-purchase year over year, that hole that we're going to dig ourselves is just going to, that pendulum is going to swing to a gross amount of money. So I, I just, if we're saving a penny today, it's going to cost us dollars tomorrow, if, if my analogy is coming through.
Yeah, you know, the, the concerns about pre-purchasing makes our investing, you know, in a, in a fiscal year, say like '22, they make sense to be concerned. The, the, the catch-22 that we would find ourselves in right now is the number that we would need to reach without pre-invest, you know, this pre-investment would be sufficiently high that it would cause us staff impacts. And so the point is taken, and people's concerns make sense to be concerned, and then have a measured, you know, approach to looking at that as we go into future years and wanting to make sure that we're, we're being mindful of that. And, you know, when we go advocate for budgets. But we are in a kind of trapdoor situation now, where, you know, if we don't do it, then there aren't many other places to go to find that number. And so then we would end up impacting staff. And so that is our conundrum at the moment. It's either one sort of or the other to some extent right now. And so that's why the end-of-the-year document kind of breaks down into what part of this is a, is a investment and what part of this is a reduction? And about 400 of the investment and about two, about 300 of other stuff, so.
And I guess I get concerned, and you know, it's been a tough year. Well, God, it's been more than a year, gosh, I should say, it's been more than a year and change now, so. And I know it's been tough on, on many residents and families in Talon and across the nation and the world. But, you know, you know, one thing that we have to remember is that education is the one thing that'll bring people out of poverty. Education's the one thing that will give us a better life. And education is the one way to get out of circumstances that we're in. So although we have to be fiscal, fiscally responsible, we need to ensure that we're still funding our education, because again, we're going to pay for it down the road. That's all. And I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that clearly, because I see a, I see a bar graph in my head and I see us paying here, and then I see it just going like this in a couple of years, where it's going to look like we're being egregious or lavish in our spending and those kind of things. So that's, that's all I had, Dr. Willitt. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Vina. Let's go to Griffin.
Thank you, Ashley. I just kind of wanted to chime in here, that I know we've discussed, discussed it several times in FFC that, you know, Dr. Willitt, I think, had said that, you know, he's expecting that there's going to be retirements next year, the year after. Programs like Literacy How for Special Ed and for Regular Ed will not need to be in our future budgets. So is, so while I, you know, certainly understand the concern about the pre-investments and having to play catch-up with that in future years' budgets, there will just naturally be a decrease in certain things, such as, you know, salaries, because I believe the new hires come in at a much lower rate than a seasoned veteran teacher. And the programs that we do see the end of kind of their, their life as far as paying outside consultants. And I know Dr. Willitt has talked about eventually that's going to become a teach-the-teacher type thing. So the consultants have come in, they've taught the teachers, and now the teachers will be, you know, sharing what they've learned with the staff. So I totally understand why the $500,000 or whatever the number ends up being of prepays. You know, yes, it will have to kind of be brought back into our budget for future years, but there's also things that are going to happen in the next couple of years that will automatically be out of our budget. So I think, you know, we can kind of hope for a little bit of an offset there. And, you know, we're really just going to kind of have to see how it plays out over the next couple of years, as far as where these pre-investments will, in fact, land in a couple of years when we're working on future budgets. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there, that, you know, we have discussed this, you know, in FFC. And I think, um, Dr. Willitt, you know, is kind of aware of the way things will, will kind of turn around in the next couple of years with some of these other expenses that we have. So thank you.
And if I, you know, if I could, just out of the, the years that I've seen in Talon since '06, '07 or so, one of the best things that can happen to us would be something like, you know, somewhere in the 2% for many years, you know? What can happen sometimes is if we have a high level of fluctuation from one year to the next, a really low budget, and then something more moderately high, and then a really low budget. What ends up happening is, in like, I, I think it was 2009, 2010, somewhere in this zone, and I'm trying to remember. You know, we went from like having some, you know, fairly decent budget and then losing like 12, 20 people, and then coming back and rehiring, and then losing, you know, these people again. And that's the worst thing. Like if we can find a stable amount, I think that's, that's the objective going way into the future. So, you know, the, the 2% this year is, is, is a, is a decent, you know, is a decent allocation. And if that were happening every year, I think we would keep this a fairly, you know, that, around that zone. It would be keeping that, you know, a fairly stable situation. And that's the goal, is we want that stability. So, you know, going out, that's the goal. And so I'm just kind of adding that to the conversation, not, not, not really taking away from or giving anything to anything here, but to say that, you know, going out, that would be really great if that, that kind of stability we could do. So a 2% in that range is, is a decent increase. You know, and I think that if we can maintain that over a series of years, we, we have a really good chance of, of finding some good stability within that 2% to 3% zone. And hopefully we can. So, you know, thankful to all the hard work that was done here. And I know that there needed to be some, you know, some of the, the, the adjustments, and we're just working through it the best way that we can. And I do hope and pray that that referendum passes. I'm confident it will. I think it's a good deal for Talon. And, and so I'm excited to see the next six days where we end up.
Okay, well, thank you guys for everything. Oh, Madhu?
Sorry, yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to the referendum. You know, I'm, I'm looking forward to not getting in the consistencies of having, you know, an increase in budget of less than a half percent every year. So, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm really looking forward to it. And I hope, I hope everyone supports this. That's it.
And I did appreciate, well, having that referendum information up there, because once again, it's in the minutes, it's everywhere, go vote. So that's important. Thank you very much, Dr. Willitt, for all that. I know that it takes a lot to always change the numbers and crunch them and get it so that we're situated. Thank you very much. So with that said, let's continue on to the COVID and pandemic update.
So, um, so the pandemic update, through just a couple of data points, this is the most recent information that I have available to me. So the latest upload of the data, or download of the data rather, was from April 23rd. Just going to give kind of a high-level thing and then talk about sort of where we're at and where we're coming into at this point. The town-level data, as you can see, it's released, we've weekly. And this will give you a sense of, you know, each of the towns in our region under the Eastern Highland Health District and where we are with Talon. Talon on the chart is right here, if you can see the highlighting. And the, you know, what's been positive about the, the, the last, this last time period is, you know, it looked like it was edging up a little bit. You know, you'll see how we were affected by the holidays. And you can almost see how that happened here. You can see how then there was a period of kind of going down a bit as people were back in school and there wasn't too much going on. And then, you know, April break, I think we're probably going to see another blip up from the April break impacts. It just is a natural kind of flow, ebb and flow that happens here. But this last report had that number going down a bit. So whenever that number goes down, I feel, you know, a little breath of relief that, you know, that we're, we're having a good, good stretch for a little bit. And I, and I feel like that's going to be happening more and more as the vaccinations, you know, hit and take effect. I did do a, a little bit of a survey to find out where people were at, and I'll include that here on how much, you know, vaccination, how many people would avail themselves of it if we had a clinic for students. I've been in contact with the Health District, and we're working through the Health District with UConn. And UConn is going to have opportunities. So there's going to be a lot of great opportunities for people to continue to get vaccinated and that the, the age groups in question, that we really, you know, need to at this point get vaccinated, those 16 to 18-year-olds, to help stop the quarantine and, you know, and things like that. We're really trying to encourage that. So we, you know, we're working to that end. And the more we can do that, the better off. You'll see that, you know, the, this is really the, the story here. This group is the, the group that is being most profoundly affected. So that's why we're most interested in making sure we can get that population vaccinated in as great a number in as soon as possible. Because, you know, when they're not fully vaccinated, they are subject to quarantine. And this group is the one that's getting quarantined quite a bit. And we have very, you know, we have rules through the, the, you know, Department of Public Health and Health District we have to follow. And I, I just, it breaks my heart to make the calls. It really does, or to, you know, then have the system and then people call and we talk about it. And, you know, obviously, people are suffering and it's a tough situation to have, you know, people quarantined. So we're just trying our best to get to a point where we're not in that situation. But this group tends to be the group quarantined even now, as of April and the last data that came out is the 23rd. This group continues to be getting hit three to four times higher than the other age groups. And so in general, where we are in comparison to the other districts, you know, other towns, these, these are typical comparison numbers that were given that Talon, for whatever reason, has plopped into. And so you'll see, just as a comparison, Talon right now is in the moderate zone with respect to the primary indicators and the secondary indicators. The leading or primary indicators are, you know, are basically the, the incidents per 100,000. And then the secondary indicators are hospitalizations, COVID-like illnesses, secondary indicator, you know, category items. They play into it, but the, the ones that they pay greatest attention to are often the primary indicators. So this is roughly where they are. This is the data range from the report on the 23rd, which again, is the most recent one that I have at the time. When I did ask about vaccinations, we got 203 resp, oh, 203, 212. Basically, 203 responses about who was responding and 212 about what they responded. Approximately 44.8% of the respondents would, would get a vaccination from the Talon Public Schools if it were offered within the Talon Public Schools. So, you know, roughly half and half right now have gotten it versus would take it if we offered it. So I am continuing to work with the Health District to either find one, you know, co-sponsor one in close proximity, or have one literally downstairs. Some of the things that came up were, well, can we bus the kids? And we can do that and did it. You know, and then it came up when I was talking to, you know, some of the students about it. Some of them don't want to get on a bus with a bunch of other people they don't know. So like, they want to either be bought by a parent guardian, or they would avail themselves of it if it was local or in our school, but they may not if they had to board a bus collectively to go there. You know, they want to make sure that they're sitting with their peers. You know, there are other aspects of things if we bust people to clinics. So that's not ruled out, but it didn't seem to be the way to get most of the people to the table, that we need to get to the table. So roughly right now, you know, half and half have gotten it, or are not interested in it, and the other half look like they would be and potentially would get it from a clinic in the Talon Public Schools, which is this figure here. I also did do a quick response survey of people that were remote learning families to find out what their feelings were, you know, what I could do better, what I could do to help bring these families back, make them feel more comfortable, and these children feel more comfortable in returning. A lot of useful information. I do think that the numbers are going to go down in May. But there are many families who are making the choice for reasons that I don't think they are going to change. So, so that, that will constitute a percentage of the population as we go into the end of the year. But I do expect the number of remote people to, to decrease from here between now and May. So that leads me into roughly where we're going to be. The Talon Continuity of Learning Plan, the Pandemic Continuity of Learning Plan for our district, you know, that's about 100 pages, it has a lot of information in it. One of the things is, you know, the pandemic education options in the period. We are coming into the end of this particular education period, and we are going into the last one of the year. And so, you know, right now, I, I've been doing the multiple meetings that typically are part of being, you know, in this situation with the pandemic and COVID, you know, daily, twice-daily meetings with medical nursing personnel, multiple conversations with the HHD almost every day. And Friday, we're culminating with our Friday COVID meeting that includes this, all the stakeholders, you know, see listed in the collaboration group here. We'll be talking about what the next steps are, and it'll be announced next week as per the plan. You know, and I, and I do feel that as we have been continuing to move forward, you know, the objective has been to continue to move more and more towards, you know, as many hours in person as possible, which we have done, I think, successfully throughout the year and been in, in the, in the majority, we spent the majority of our time in. You know, we're looking at the two, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday schedules and looking at moving them back to the, the typical schedules. Wednesday, keeping the same, but Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, looking at moving back to the typical schedules. So our Friday meeting will be a very important one this week. And, you know, we'll, we'll be doing that discussion with those stakeholders. There's been quite a few meetings, as I said, building up to that point in this last, last couple of days, frankly, and, and before the, before the break as well. So that's pretty much where we are right now. You know, these are the, the basic data points. And that's the update for the moment.
I just had a couple clarification questions for you. First off, was it the remote learners who answered the survey, the 212?
Well, no, the, I'm sorry for not being clear. There were two outreaches I did. One was on vaccinations. If we offered a clinic, would you avail, would you avail yourself of it?
Who did you ask?
I asked the, the parent guardians and the students of this age group, of the eligible age group.
Okay.
16, you know, those who, 16 and older. You know, we got 212 responses from it, which is decent. You know, a 30, roughly 30% response, you know, is not unheard of, you know? So that's roughly what I got back from that. But asking the populations of those who are 16, 17, or 18, and either a student or a parent of a 16, 17, or 18-year-old, and then asking them to please not report, you know, tell the other that they did it. So for instance, if I had my daughter, if I was going to do it, either she would do it or I would do it, we shouldn't both do it, because then it will throw it off a bit. And I did share the information with the Health District so we can make some decisions about whether that should be a clinic inside or nearby.
Okay, I was just wanting to clarify exactly who was sent the surveys, because I just wanted to make sure.
It was the high school, high school populations, because we cannot. It was the high school, high school populations because we cannot vaccinate the younger kids.
Okay, I'm just making sure. And then the other question for the typical schedules, that was for all grades, correct? That to do the full schedule, if you go back to that, depending on.
For all grades.
For all grades.
Twelve, yeah.
So high school, middle school lunches, like things of that nature.
Return to a typical schedule. Lunches. All of it. But there would still, just to clarify though, however, and that's why the, the for Friday meeting is really important. So we get all the stakeholders to weigh in and we already have had conversations in this direction. We've been talking about this. It would not be exactly the same. So for instance, we would still do some mitigations in the cafeterias, but to the extent that it would be lunches happening in the schools, that would be happening. We would need, you know, we are trying to acquire some, you know, there's tents and some other things we'd be doing that would then allow us to spread populations out, but they, you know, they would be having that typical day.
Um, and, okay, I have more questions, but I'll let everyone ask questions and throw mine in at the end. I'm gonna do.
There with me here real, sorry. Would it be, is, is something we're considering in the fall to do another vaccination clinic for, you know, specifically that age group and then other teachers that if they haven't been able to get vaccinated?
You said fall, did you mean?
I'm sorry, um, correct. So September.
You know, I, I don't know what our situation will be then. If it helps, I would always work in collaboration with the health district to try to offer vaccination options to our students and families. So I will bend over backwards to try to make those possible to avoid quarantines and to avoid those impacts. I don't know if they're going to be offered in September. I, I, from the little that has come of that so far. It, it is possible that we will need to do booster shots. And in the event that we do, we will work in collaboration with the health district to try to provide them to make it as easy as possible for people to get them. But I don't know what, by then, maybe they'll have found a way to make this even more ubiquitous, you know, so you can just walk into your stop and shop, get the shot and go get the cookies. Maybe they will have, you know, made the boosters that, that prevalent and, you know, maybe that'll change the game a bit. But, but we would, we would cooperate with the districts in any way we could to make sure that, you know, students and families had that option and could avail themselves of it.
Fair enough. Okay, that was it. That was my question.
Uh, but next, Jacob.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Willett, for the update. It was encouraging to see that we might be able to go back to the normal in time, so these four days a week. I did just want to throw this out to the board. I think in future meetings over the late spring and early summer, it might be useful under news business to have, not news business, new business, to have a couple of board-led discussions about the fall. You know, with all your advice and the expert advice, it might be useful for us to kind of review these things, kind of like how we did in late summer of last year when we were talking about whether to do remote or hybrid or in-person learning. I think that would be useful, especially for us as the elected representatives of the town to kind of give a little direction upon that, obviously with expert points of view. The other thing, you know, I'm, I'm a nobody here, but I guess I'll use my platform just to say that, say this, that chart you have with the percentages. It's great to see, you know, the elderly groups have such low rates of this now of proportion to people who have it. I think it really shows just how effective vaccine is and I just encourage people to get it, but that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Let's go to Griffin next.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Willett, for putting this together. I, I didn't answer the high school survey because I don't have a sixteen or over kid at the moment. So I guess my concern though is, you know, is this a lot of work for your office to be putting together vaccine clinics? And the only reason why I ask is have we consulted with the health department as far as consulting with local pediatricians, for example? And the reason why I bring this up is I just got an email from my pediatrician on Monday that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of this week at five thirty, they were having drive-through Pfizer shots. And if it was anything like we got our flu shot, you know, last fall, it was great. You rolled down your window, you stick out your arm and you're done. So I'm just curious, like, does it make sense to kind of either have the health district to reach out to? I mean, my pediatrician's in Vernon. I, I know of a lot of people in Talon who use the same pediatrician. So does it make sense to kind of see what pediatrician offices are offering before we kind of go through all of this red tape to try to get a clinic at our schools? So that's my, my only concern, you know, that this is pulling you in a direction when you probably have a lot of other things, you know, to focus on as well, you know, is there basically somebody else like our local, you know, health people who could, you know, kind of focus on vaccinating our sixteen and over crowd? So that's all.
It's a good and reasonable question. I am trying to find the right kind of way of describing. I, I think that the way that this has come down has been a kind of all hands on deck approach to vaccinations in Connecticut. And so, you know, we, we have made a lot of progress in Connecticut. Connecticut has done a really good job comparatively. There is a population now that is very difficult to reach and it happens to be this one. And so the state's even encouraging us if we can get, you know, things local, as local as your school, but also maybe, you know, close by, that this, that these young adults may be more prone to avail themselves of it if it is extremely easy to access. Whereas say the elderly populations, they literally brought it into nursing homes, you know, and that's how they, they really did that is they were able to hit those populations where they lived, literally. The thought is if you can get to these age groups where they are during the day, there's a much higher chance we will get that done. And so what you're saying makes sense. There, there may be really increased capacity. The number of people getting it in the means that you've described is, is tapering off and that is, that is getting the attention of the health districts and they're noticing that and saying, that's not a good thing. It's not good that it's tapering off in this age group, that we need to keep vigilant on that because this age group is the one that, you know, will be, you know, affected. And when I think about it, especially at this time of year, I, I do not want to see kids, you know, young adults at that senior, junior, senior level or senior level in particular getting knocked out of activities because they were out on the sports field and then did something or, or, you know, once you're out there, it's, it becomes a situation where typically I have to quarantine the entire group. It's very, very high probability the entire group gets knocked out when it's a sports team or, you know, certain contexts that could really knock them out. I don't want any of them missing any of this time of their lives. So, you know, it is, it is work to get it done, but it also is work that acts in tandem with keeping them in the school, keeping them in in-person learning, keeping them in their activities that are so important to them. And I pray and hope that next year I am not doing this. You know, like at this point, at this time of the year, next year, I would love to not have this be the case. And maybe they will have increased their capacity and ability to do this in a way where literally, you know, they not necessarily even go into the Vernon doctor, maybe they're just going right to their CVS, picking up the mouthwash and getting that shot. Maybe that is what will happen for twelve and fifteen year olds and all of that. And, and then it'll be a totally different world and situation. But we're in this really weird timeline with the end of the year. And I just don't want to see them negatively impacted. So any chance that we can get those young adults in means that they won't miss out and they won't get kicked out, you know, and, and that's why I would put the energy in now, you know.
Anything else, Griffin, or you could? There was a kind of a little silence or hand was still up, so just making sure. Plord. Oh, get ready. Nurse coming out, I can see it.
I, I got a few points. I'm very happy to hear the word tent. I've been advocating for tents for a while now. I love it. I think it's a great way to even just get kids outside even without a pandemic. I think it's awesome. I did like Jacob's idea about the board discussion around next year and what's going on. We don't really know. I mean, we haven't really made many of the decisions in terms of pandemic learning because of, you know, direction from the state, but I don't know if that's going to change or what's going to happen. So I love the idea of just being able to have a discussion. I wrote down remote learning. I don't know why. I think it's more, oh, I know. I know other districts have voted to eliminate it. I don't know if that's something we're supposed to decide on. As much as I potentially dislike remote learning, I, I don't think the pandemic is going away. So I, I think it's something that we still need to, you know, kind of have in our back pocket, especially with the little kids, if they're in and out of quarantine because they don't, they're not able to get vaccines yet. And then that was the last point I wanted to make was, was the vaccines, you know, as more and more people get vaccinated, you know, the zero to five and may probably six to twelve, those will be the vulnerable populations. And I have been watching, you know, what's going on in other countries and, you know, some of these variants are affecting little kids. So just to be cognizant of that and, you know, I urge everyone to get vaccinated to protect our kids and keep them in school. So with that, I didn't really have any questions. I just wanted to just make a few points. So thanks, guys.
Thank you, Plord. Let's go to Dana.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Willett. You know, it is, it is wonderful to see the numbers going down, especially in the older populations. Obviously, that sixteen to twenty-five group is concerning. Although I don't want you to be tasked with additional, additional tasks above and beyond your superintendent role. I think that it is very important that we have vaccine clinics in a variety of different spaces. As we talked about, you know, folks in the retirement homes or elderly communities didn't have equitable access to get out of their homes or get to, get to a clinic itself or to get vaccinated. And not all of our, our students, our young, young adults are able to get to those, those offices and such. You know, you have the single mom, the single dad of multiple children that are working multiple jobs that don't necessarily have that equitable access to go. So I think having it right in our back door is, is so important for all aspects of our community to get those folks vaccinated. So thank you for doing that. I do look forward to our, our COVID meeting on Friday to hear from our nursing staff and from our educators, you know, administrators to see, to hear their ideas, especially Mr. Saba. Not especially, but I do appreciate Mr. Saba's information and input because he has, you know, the wherewithal and all the information on how to maintain a clean and sanitize cafeteria, hallways, floors, those things. So as we work towards the goal of going the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday with that typical schedule, I look forward to hearing how the staff is going to adapt to that. I want us to be cognizant of the fact that when we did go to four and a half days, we'll call it five days, four and a half days. We're never going to make everybody happy and people were upset that we shortened the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday to gain a couple hours on a Wednesday. So although getting that full day, which I think is, is desperately needed for our in-person learners as well as our remote learners, we just need to be cognizant of, of our families adapting to, to yet another schedule change. With that, although, you know, I think we have what, eight weeks, eight weeks left. I think we're at that final push and you know, spring has sprung and we are going to have some opportunities for those outside learning spaces. I think that's fantastic. Again, I'll leave it for our meeting in the COVID meeting, but I, I, I look forward to understanding, you know, the lunches specifically in the high school and the middle school because they've had the grab and goes as of now, but it sounds like they're going to have the typical lunch schedule. So I'm interested to see how the staffs at the middle school and the high school plan on ensuring proper distancing and cleanliness and spacing and all that kind of fun stuff. But I do appreciate what, what you and your entire staff have done to get us to the goal. I mean, everybody, whether you're a remote learner, you're an in-person learner, everybody wants to have their kids in front of their educators. And we're making every single day a step towards that goal. Some slower than others, but we're getting there. So I do thank you and your staff for that and I look forward to our COVID meeting. Those are just some of the concerns I have. You might not have those answers. Obviously, the folks on your team will probably have a little bit more information to share. I think that's it. I don't know if it was really a question versus a statement or what have you, but thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Dr. Willett, I know in terms of what Jacob was saying and for for the districts that are voting no to the remote learning, that was the Ellington that seemed to have like a workshop that had parents, teachers and admin. It kind of sounds like what we have with our COVID group that they took a, having a conversation, I mean, you probably would know a little bit more than I would about it because I only read an article versus like you actually live in the town, so.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I, I guess what I would do is I wouldn't, I won't necessarily comment on what Ellington did, but I will say, I think from the standpoint of what the status of remote learning is within the state, we have yet to hear from the state officially what their next move or, or, or communication is on that. Many of you may recall that Governor Lamont had made many statements that, that it would be an expectation that remote learning options were provided in the fall. And this looks like there may be a pivot on that somewhere in the future, but it would probably be, we would, we, we, it may be prudent for us to see what exactly the legislature is thinking about with respect to this before making any major declaration on it, because so much changes in four months. I mean, four months ago was extremely different than today. Four months from now will likely have many different factors involved and, you know, it may be the state is going to partner with a corporation and, you know, offer all remote learners something at the state. It, it may not be necessary for us to make a declaration for this to resolve itself. And, and we may be that we, we may be, I don't know that it serves us to make a declaration on the matter before seeing it progress a little bit more and seeing where it's going. So I think it's just one of those things that I don't take away from anything any other district has done. I, I think every district is doing its very best and the people working within it are working extremely hard, as are you. I just think we, we may want to just take a, take a step back, take a breath and look at how the landscape unfolds before us before making any declarations, especially given that the governor had made some statements that they may then change. And I, we should probably see what, what's coming down from them. That would be my recommendation, at least for the next few weeks.
Just ran a couple notes. Um, Plord.
Sorry, I did have a question. I asked way, way earlier and I just wanted to bring it up again about the email I had received in regards to masks outside, if there was any anticipated changes in masking outdoors for the kids.
Yeah, so when I conferred with the health district on masks, basically the response I got was if they're outside and they will remain six feet apart, then the mask can come off. If they are not, then social, you know, they cannot social distance in that manner, then masks should remain on. That was the official response I received.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, um, Jacob?
Just real quick in response to Dr. Willett's explanation there, you know, with this meeting, I'm not suggesting that we overrule the state or anything, because that'd be kind of pointless at this point anyways. But I just say that there's going to be some, there might be some areas for interpretation that are worth discussing at the board level over the summer as we get more information. That's, that's all I'm saying. there might be some areas for interpretation that are worth discussing at the board level over the summer as we get more information. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Uh, Dana?
And I, I second that. I think that's, I know you weren't motioning anything, Jacob, but I definitely think it's a great opportunity for us to have a good discussion around this, because this is ever evolving. Um, and I, I don't know, I mean, the support, it's our job to support, you know, our superintendent in the schools. And I think it's a great idea to have us have that open dialogue and uh formulate a great game plan for talent. So thank you for bringing it up, Jacob. I think it's an awesome idea.
Okay, and I think that uh close out the H two for the COVID pandemic conversation. So we can go to your um superintendent evaluation.
All right, so this is a pretty straightforward thing. Every, uh, around this time of year, every year, um, it's in board policy that I let you know that we are approaching the superintendent evaluation period. Um, so this is, this is essentially the same exact thing that I put out every year to the board. Um, that says respectfully provide reminders to put in the school's annual evaluation process. He, you know, occurs no later than May thirty-first of each year, um, basically wraps up around June thirtieth. Um, and then I could provide a reaction beyond that, et cetera, et cetera. And that no later than July thirty-first of each year, the agreement, um, you'll meet in an executive session, et cetera. So um, so basically, we're just entering the timeline and I will, uh, you know, I will reach out to, to uh Adam Chair and the co-chair and I, you know, provide the timeline again so we can start to decide, you know, what meetings. You know, we obviously meet, we set the stage, we do the things we did last year. And wrap it up by, by, by midsummer.
I know, um, last year, I can't remember the timeline of when you started doing the um, the little survey questions. When did we start that?
That can, that's gonna be happening in the next few weeks. I'll, I'll adapt the timeline and I'll give it to you and to uh Ms. Plord so that you can, we can start that.
Yeah, because I know that was like with the, one of the first things of just gathering all of that information and having all of, um, yeah, it was just a lot of that kind of.
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, any board members have any questions about this? No? Okay. So let's go to the, let's move into the committee and liaison reports. Um, I do know that the mental health had met. And since they, we have members from here on there, um, let's start off there.
Since you're the secretary, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah.
Another job for Jacob.
Yeah.
Yep.
I promised to only use this power for good, no? Anyway, uh, yeah, we've had our second meeting um earlier this week, Monday, I believe, um, where we elected our leadership. Um, and we're going to start our regular meeting schedule. I believe that's gonna be published up in June, so any meetings we have in May will be technically special meetings. But uh, for those interested, it'll be on the first and third Mondays of the month at seven PM. Um, and I'm looking forward to getting started with that. Um, and I'll hopefully have some more information for that soon, but it's still very much up in the early stages of it. But it's good to know that we've got kind of a foundation to work on um as far as leadership goes and a meeting schedule.
How many people were, ended up being on the task force?
Oh, there's like. I think it's thirteen, thirteen with like one of being an alternate, I believe, twelve or thirteen?
It's large, just big.
Yeah, it's, it's a big group. It's a big group. Yeah, all seem like fun people, though.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's great, guys. Um, if I had more time, it would definitely be something that I would be interested in doing. Um, that just like, there's just no way I could have anything else on my plate. So thank you, guys, for that, and I look forward to the updates on, on that. Um, and then with that, guys, you guys did not know, you guys didn't have our um curriculum. Uh, so let's go to, well, I know Dana's gonna have a bunch for her special Birch Grove meetings. I didn't get to read the packet that Jen sent, but I know that's probably large to go through.
Yeah, sorry, I'm closing a door. I have loud noise. Um, yes, so we had two meetings since our last Board of Ed meeting, um, for Birch Grove. And we went over a plethora of change orders. Um, specifically, uh, there was expansion joint covers, um, it was small, uh, construction contingent, contingency adjustment. Um, the big one was the automatic door operators. Um, so for those of you who who went to, and I believe that all of us in this room, Zoom room, went to the walkthrough. Um, so we went through the, I feel like Katie calls it the gym cafeteria.
In the cafeteria.
Good, thank you. That's what Dr. Willett said. Um, there's the automatic doors. Um, so there was a contingency so that we could have, uh, you know, the, those slider doors and having the keys, having them operate to open and close. We went through that. Um, there's also the double doors um at the front entrance vestibule um that have the automatic hinges um that are like four hundred and something pounds per door. Um, so they were worried about, you know, little hands and heavy doors and ADA accessibility and different things like that. And we have to have specific hinges and door, door, um, pushbars and such, um, as per requirements. Um, and the, these doors are a little bit heavier because of the special glazing um that the committee um approved on for security purposes, as well as the heat coming through and all of that. So we went through that. That was quite a large change order. Um, some grab bars we went over, um, some changes to where the smart boards, the Promethean boards are versus um, the, these strips to go above to have the flags or different things above the Promethean boards for the educators. Um, the gym floor painting was a big one and it, and it's been approved within a certain dollar amount currently. Um, so right now it has the eaglet in the middle. And they want to make sure that it's facing the appropriate way so that if we do do, I know like right now, Mr. Poland is doing a lot of um audio visual in, in their, in their gym to, to uh have sports um publicized. So if in fact we end up doing more of those things at Birch Grove, they want to make sure that that eaglet is facing the appropriate way for an audio visual perspective. Um, we know that um Mr. Keaton has requested a running track around the edge of the border to kind of keep our, our littlest in line and it keeps them, you know, it, it to touch points, the different things like that. Talking about having Birch Grove written on each of the touch, the end zones, I'll call them, it's not basketball end zone, but it looks like a field goal end zone. It has the Birch Grove. So we talked about that. So um, we agreed upon that. We just need to get some more details on dollar amount. We gave them a, a, the, the, the committee agreed on a certain limit to not go beyond. Um, so we're gonna be, they reviewed that, excuse me. They reviewed that. Um, we are on time. Some stuff, uh, Mr. Karcha and his team are ahead of schedule. Um, Ms. Fawn from JCJ reviewed the furniture and fixture package and the tech package. We were able to, for, for some savings that we had, we're able to bring in some of the wishlist items to help uh with some uh key areas for our sped learning um and our um, our learning in the hallway on Main Street, there's those larger areas with the cloud space. So um, there was uh some furniture and fixtures and tech that we were able to add from cost savings. So the big thing is we're on time, we're ahead of schedule on multiple aspects, and um we're looking good to open in the fall. And that's all I have, actually.
No, that's exciting. Um, you know, I kind of like the idea of the little track because those little toe tokens where the kids are like, like walking, I mean, that's like a huge thing down there, you know, you gotta earn your toes.
Well, and Mr. Yeah, and Mr. Keaton's point was, is if he wants to give, you know, our littlest guys and girls, um, I mean, it's very tangible, walk around the track or run to the end of the track to this part of the track or to, or to the eaglet. So it gives them a good learning and visual space. It was actually a very cool presentation on that, so. But yeah, it's great. I, I think everybody is gonna be pleased.
It is exciting. So how does this tie in then, Dr. Willett, when you're saying for the Birch Grove that they need to get the um movers and things of that a little bit sooner? We need to get out of the, like, so how does that all tie into the?
Yeah, it, it greatly helps us to be on the front edge of that timeline that they are, you know, potentially ahead of schedule really helps. Um, but what it also does is it, it pushes us to make sure we are out of there, you know, out of the portables as soon as possible, too. So um, we're just, we are in a fortunate position of this being being ahead of schedule and being, looking like we may be able to have that building, you know, mostly done by, by June, as uh, you know, Ms. Philbin had said. Uh, the portables will then need to be completely evacuated, you know, everything has to come out of there and then go into the units. And so those portables, we might have had a little more time to get stuff out of there. But now we will not have that time. So we just need to make sure that we take advantage of every, every moment that we have. And so, um, you know, you know, expanding the funds that, that we talked about tonight will help us do that. Um, one other thing is, um, I couldn't figure out, I'm sorry, because my, my mic went a little or my earpiece went a little off, but uh, Ms. Philbin, did you talk about the, the playground? Because there are some changes to that playground in the short term. Did that get covered at all for you? And it probably didn't. I'm not putting you, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but this, this happened very recently. So I just want to update people, because you are gonna see something change like next week. Um, and I don't think it made it out there yet, but um, the, they, there was an opportunity, the town had an opportunity to um have the, the old playground relocated in, um, they found a vendor that would do that, which is difficult to do. So next week, the old playground, the vast majority of it is being moved. And so the, the fencing will be extended out towards the new playground. And we will be, you know, looking at adding swings to the new project or to the new playground project so we can, you know, make that part of the new playground. But the vast majority of the old playground will be disappearing in about one week from now. So you'll see that difference, and I just wanted to make sure people knew, you know, that that was coming so that when we get to next week, you know, people might wonder why that wasn't brought up, and I just wanted to throw it out there so you know.
Um, Dr. Willett, to answer your question, um, the last couple of times we talked about it in the Birch Grove Committee, um, it was tabled because Pete was still working, Mr. Saba was still working on, because they were looking at donating it or how they could, you know, different things and, and ensuring um the liability aspect. So I know that, that, that he is, was working tirelessly on doing it, but, but I know, but most recently it wasn't, um.
Sure, sure.
Advised.
And it is a very recent thing that it was finally decided upon. They did get this opportunity out of, you know, they were trying and it, and it just availed, the opportunity appeared, so they're, they're grabbing it. Um, and get it, you know, being able to get that done at a, at actually a much lower cost than would otherwise. So that's why the timeline is what it is. I do think that uh there'll no longer be a, uh, what is it, that spring-loaded rocking back and forth motorcycle? So since my, you know, my wife won't let me have a real motorcycle anymore, I was hoping maybe to get that and just sit in the backyard and rock back and forth on it to relive it. But um, so some of those items will not be part of the playground anymore. They'll be part of the town, you know, they'll be discarded or part of the town playground. Um, but you, most of, uh, everything that you've seen as of the new playground, the, the ship, all of that, um, and hopefully plus some swings, that's what we're working on now, will be part, you know, will be there and part of that, that new, the new playground will be there for the kids. So just, people know there will be a playground for them. It's just that old part of it is going to be relocated for the town.
All right, thank you, guys. Um, let's go to communications. How about you two ladies?
Well, we finally met, uh, and we've, we got a great time where everybody can go and attend uh and had a great discussion. Uh, we talked a little bit about social media as one of the avenues to bring people back to the core, which is us, the board. Uh, so Dr. Willett showed us his page and potentially we'll share more there so that when other things get shared on Facebook and different spaces, you know, we can really just make sure that, um, you know, there is some information coming directly from the board uh as opposed to different avenues. Uh, we had a fruitful discussion on board email communication. Um, we talked about the pros and cons of the Google form uh for constituents to email the board. Um, and ultimately, the committee decided that the Google form was the best way to continue for now. Um, and then we talked about the budget process and ways to improve communication uh over the next year. Uh, so it was a good meeting. We didn't have anything to bring to the board for action, but um, you know, I think over the summer, uh, Tony had brought up the idea and the committee agreed, um, you know, we're gonna take a look at the district communications plan uh because there's more than just social media uh to bring people back to us and get information out there. Uh, so we're gonna take a look at the plan and, you know, just kind of identify if there's any, you know, room for improvement or what we're doing well and, and go on from there. So that was it for communications. Our, our meetings are now on, I believe, the fourth Monday of the month at three o'clock. And town council, uh, I didn't attend the uh budget presentation, but I know we're all eagerly waiting uh for next Tuesday. And then, oh, and we have a new member on the town council, Sophia Johnson, so welcome to her. And that's all I had, Ash.
I'm just, still just writing my notes. So, um, the fourth Monday at three, right?
Yes.
I, I totally, uh, I was going to come this Monday because I knew it was on there and then something came up with the baby or something and I'm totally, totally missing. I was like, oh, no, I thought about it afterwards. I was like, ah. I wanted to see what was going on, because I mean, that's definitely a, a great committee to get up and running and a lot of things can happen and do. I mean, I'm so excited when the subcommittees are doing all the work and getting everything. It's, it's exciting to me. Um, so, and negotiations, is there anything, Rini, or?
Um, no. We, well, we, I don't think we've met since the last meeting, but we are meeting tomorrow, so we, we're, we're moving along.
Okay. And I'm not forgetting anyone, and now's your time to pipe up if I'm missing anyone. Okay, I'm good. So then I will move on to the chairperson's report. Honestly, I just wanted to make sure that everyone's uh well rested from the week off. I mean, it was great and especially the weather today. I am so excited to just get some vitamin D because it's good for the soul and it's just, oh, my God, whether you're out in a tent or not, you have to go outside and get some fresh air. It just makes all, all of a difference. Um, nothing for board action, and so now we will go to our second and public participation. Comments must be limited to items on the agenda, and we will have Jacob do the thirty seconds um visual and let you know. And if you could, please state your name and your address first. And if you could, please raise your hand, and I will call upon you from there. And I don't see anything. Okay, um. Move to points of information. Do any board members have anything else that they would like to say for tonight? This is when Tony's crickets, I can start having the crickets out here in my window. I hear them. Madu?
Um, all I've got is just please go vote on Tuesday the fourth.
Absolutely. Okay, um, we do not have any future or new business unless there's something, Dr. Willett, you want to add in?
No, I think, uh, you know, we'll talk at the next, uh, the next meeting we have, but uh, presentation on pathways coming up.
Yeah, that was for May that we were saying.
Yeah, 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 and then um, some other, other things we'll be talking about, obviously, to put on the agenda.
Okay, so at this time, I will um entertain a motion for adjournment.
Jacob Mari, I move that we adjourn the April twenty-eighth regular Board of Education meeting at eight thirty-five PM.
But do you want to tell a second?
Neither one.
Yeah, you can have it. That's.
Okay, Lisa, so Rini's gonna second that one. She's like, I'm out of here. I don't think there's any discussion on this, but we will do the roll call vote. Um, Madu? You have, Madu?
Sorry, sorry, I, sorry.
Dana?
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
Plord?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Rini?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
I'm, I as well. Therefore, it will end the meeting at eight thirty-six. Thank you, guys, for everything. Have a wonderful day.
Good night.
This weather keeps up.
Good night, guys.